Sure, we had a show with people's retirement. People have been that's their end of their other retirement they did, they've had to back off that. So I think he's just finally going, I gotta start counting every $10,000.
Good morning, Phil. Good morning.
Morning.
Just in the nick of time.
Huh?
Just in the nick of time.
Actually, I walked in and looked, walked around. Nobody ever said a word like I was invisible or something.
Good morning and welcome to the April 26th Board of Supervisors meeting. Will you join me in the flag salute, followed by a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation and a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and please be seated. Well, item number one, Mr. Ray Moreno was able to be here this morning because of illness in the family, so I wish the best to him and we'll schedule him for a later date for his retirement plaque. So let's move to item number two, adopt the resolution for proclaiming the month of May 2011 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Tulare County. Pete Caffey Farrell is going to speak to this issue.
Good morning, Chairman Anis and members of the board. I'm a, my name is Kathy Farrell. I'm a retired public health nurse and I'm from Porterville and I'm here today as a representative of the Tulare County Mental Health Board to talk to you about Mental Health Awareness Month. Mental health is often ignored, I think, when governing bodies consider the health of their constituents. There's a tendency to focus on physical health, on things like communicable disease transmission and illnesses like heart disease and cancer and the incidence of birth defects and other, and diabetes. However, Mental Health Awareness Month draws attention to the fact that mental health is equally as important as physical health in the overall well-being, not only of individuals, but also of the population in general. One in four families in Tulare County is impacted by mental illness. It's been estimated by the Surgeon General 10 years ago that 12% of children under the age of 18 have a diagnosable mental illness and that only one in five of those are identified and receiving appropriate treatment. The Tulare County Mental Health Department is actively working towards a wellness and recovery model of evidence-based treatment modalities and has planned several events during the month of May to bring attention to mental health. It's important to remember that mental illnesses are brain disorders and that evidence-based mental health treatment works and it can improve the lives immeasurably of people who are affected by these illnesses. On April 30th, this coming Saturday, is the first event for Mental Health Month. I realize it's in April, but we, we've joined with NAMI in Fresno for a NAMI Walk. The NAMI Walks for the Mind of America are events that occur in 80 different communities across the country. In Fresno, the NAMI Walk has usually been planned to coincide with Mental Health Awareness Month. NAMI Tulare County is one of 70 affiliates of NAMI in the state of California and NAMI is the National Alliance on Mental Illness. The purposes of the NAMI Walk are primarily to reduce the stigma around mental illness and to bring awareness to the fact that it's necessary to improve the mental health services systems in this country. You're all invited to join us for the walk if you're interested in coming to Rotting Park for the day. The walk is in the morning, it's near the zoo, families frequently come and make a, make an outing of it. We are very appreciative of everyone in Tulare County who has helped support us in this walk. On May the 10th, you'll receive a presentation about the Perinatal Awareness Project, not Perinatal Awareness Project, excuse me, Perinatal Depression Awareness Project. The media campaign for this is called Speak Up When You're Down and this is a collaboration between Public Health and Mental Health in Tulare County. On May 19th will be the 12th Annual Mental Health Housing Conference at the Holiday Inn here in Visalia. It's an all-day event. It is a cooperation, a cooperative event between Kings and Tulare Counties this year. The keynote speaker is Xavier Amador, who is a nationally known speaker, and he will also be giving a workshop and an Ask the Doctor session in the afternoon. Also on May 19th, there'll be another graduation from Mental Health Court. And on May the 24th, there'll be a presentation to the board about the Equine Facilitated Therapy Program, which is a collaboration between Tulare Youth Services Bureau and Happy Trails Riding Academy. There will also be a special event at Magic Mountain for mental health consumers focusing on wellness and recovery for them during that day. And later on this month, you will all be receiving an invitation to an open house at the Transitional Living Center, which has recently been remodeled, and at the East Tulare Cottages, which have just been opened for independent living for mental health consumers. I want to thank you for your attention and for the recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month in the month of May in Tulare County.
Thank you, Kathy. And at this time Supervisor Pete Vanderpool will be-
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few words, Kathy, and then also to present you with the proclamation on behalf of the Mental Health Board, or on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to the Mental Health Board. What you said really speaks volumes about mental illness. So many people are unaware that mental illness is such a critical issue in our communities. One in four families or one in four people are affected by some sort of mental illness and that just, if you think about it, you know, I look across the board here and, you know, there's five of us up here and sometimes I think that there are some that might have mental illnesses, but this month is really about awareness, it's about outreach, public education, and I really think that the work that you're doing and the calendar that you've just shown of all the events and all the things that are taking place this month to reach out to the community and help increase awareness, just speak leaps and bounds about what the Mental Health Board does and the awareness that it has brought to the community. So I'm very appreciative of that and it's my pleasure to serve on the Mental Health Board here in Tulare County. I enjoy the people, I enjoy learning more and more about it, and I enjoy doing the best that I can to increase awareness in all that I do as a county supervisor. So if you'd please join me here in the while, I'd love to present you with the proclamation.
We also appreciate your participation in the mental health.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpool and thank you, Kathy, and thank everyone for being here.
That's an action item.
Okay, at this time, we will move to public comment. One wishing to approach the board on matters not on the agenda but pertinent to the county may speak at this time. Seeing no one, we will move on to Board of Supervisor Matters, starting with Supervisor Ashida.
On April 12th, and that was the board day and I missed the board meeting, I testified in front of the California State Senate about a bill that Senator Michael Rubio introduced, which creates a Central Valley Rail Authority. And this was in a Subcommittee on Natural Resources. And from that testimony and others testifying, the Subcommittee at a unanimous approval of creating a Central Valley Rail Authority, which would cover Kern, Tulare, Fresno, Kings, and Merced Counties. So that bill will go forward to the Senate and then it will go to the Assembly and finally to the Governor. The people in the urban areas who sit on, on that Subcommittee really realize how important right-of-ways are and preserving those right-of-ways, because they gave up many of their right-of-ways and they have really congestion problems today. They also understand the importance of goods movement, so it was a very successful hearing. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Wordley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next Tuesday, I will be not at our meeting, I will be in Washington DC as the representative of the San Joaquin Valley Air Push Control District Governing Board, which I'm chairing this year. So I will be back there working on behalf of the San Joaquin Valley and our air control efforts to improve our air quality. And I see that we have a new member of the Local Area Formation Commission here today, Rudy Mendoza from Woodlake, and he's the small city representative will be joining Mr. Ashida and myself, representing the cities, small cities on the LAFCO Commission. So welcome to our chambers and welcome on board.
Congratulations, Rudy.
And Rudy, is it this Saturday that the Woodlake has its parade, or the following Saturday?
Thank you Supervisor, members of the board. Actually, the Western Week in Woodlake kicks off on Friday with the Woodlake High School Foundation Dinner. And if you can contact anybody from Woodlake High School, if anybody's interested for some tickets, then we have the traditional Western Week list of activities, which comes to an end on Saturday with our parade and of course, the rodeo in Elderwood, the Woodlake Rodeo. So any of the members in the audience, if you're interested in going out and seeing a good rodeo, come on out, love to see you in Woodlake.
Thanks, Rudy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, of two items also, not to compete with Woodlake's event, but Saturday morning, Visalia, we'll have a Cinco de Mayo Parade in the morning in downtown area. Attended last year, it was a very, very fun event. Be a lot of booths and vendors there providing information services, as well as my favorite cotton candy. Last week, that didn't even get a chuckle, come on. Last week, I attended the Agricultural Advisory Committee and I want to again thank the board for asking me to serve in that capacity. Some very interesting things were discussed I wanted to share with the board, things that I, you know, one thing I didn't know was the issue, is occasionally we have electrical emergencies out several times out in the citrus areas, I guess, where power lines might go down because of frost or even an accident, something, or a meter might go bad on an agricultural property. And Southern California Edison will not reset a meter or hook those lines back up without an inspection tag from the county. So that, I guess that was an issue and the Agriculture Advisory Committee has worked on that with RMA to come up with a way to have an on-call, it's not 100% done yet, but have an on-call person that would be able to go out in case of an emergency like that, inspect work that, repair work that was done by a private contractor and tag it so that the Edison company could immediately get power backup to that farming operation. I guess that could be quite a big deal Supervisor Ashida, if your windmills aren't working and you're looking at a freeze and you need to have power to run those things. So I was impressed with the way we'd worked that out. Staff is going to come back with answer to what full recovery, full cost recovery means in case of having an inspector come out to hang that permit. I would imagine it's going to be a lot more affordable than losing a lot of your crop because of a frost. We again talked about the solar projects on Williamson Act property. The Advisory Committee again took its position to oppose solar projects on Williamson Act contracted land. And something interesting came out of that as well. Property owners were not aware of the cancellation process. If they wanted to cancel, they'd like to know what is the process, is there a, you know, what's the one, two, three of going through the cancellation process? And then the question was then asked, if we do initiate a cancellation process on this piece of property and the solar project doesn't happen two or three years down the road, is there an easy out? Can we get back into the contract after, you know, having given notice to cancel? I think those are interesting questions that we need to have answers for. The third thing I learned there at that meeting is our, the property taxes will go up on those properties, even though they're in the Williamson Act preserve, now they're taxed on the value of the land as grazing land or whatever it might be, whether it's $10 a year or $8 a year. And it would be reevaluated based on the rental value of that property. So whatever the rental value of the property is, it would be reassessed at that time. So kind of a silver lining to that cloud that if these do move forward, properties will be reassessed at the rental value with the solar on them. So that would mean a, probably a slight increase in tax, property tax income to the county. So interesting conversations I wanted to make the board aware of. The Farm Bureau stays very involved in the issue and again, Alrestate continues to oppose any solar projects on any Williamson Act contracted land. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Cox. Supervisor Vanderpool?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a few items this week. First of all, I want to send my congratulations and the board's congratulations to Barton Smith. He's been selected as the Tulare Farmer of the Year for this year and he's going to be honored and recognized at the Farmer of the Year Luncheon put on by the Tulare Kiwanis. That will be held tomorrow at the Heritage Complex, starting at 12 o'clock. So congratulations to Barton and his family. Next is Special Olympics takes place this Friday at the Bob Mathias Stadium in Tulare. They begin around 9:30 and it's always a great event and it's really great to see all the youth and the families participate in an event and really get competitive and really have a good time. So it's just a, it's a real fun event and invite everyone to come out and support Special Olympics in Tulare and it's actually the countywide Special Olympics too. So then lastly, there's a fundraiser this Saturday at the home of Jimmy and Tammy Valov for the Tulare Athletic Boxing Club. That begins around 5:00. And please come out and support a great organization down in Tulare that serves the South County and lots of youth throughout the county. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. We have another Step Up Gang organizing meeting tomorrow in Porterville. The Step Up Event will be on May 5th at the Nazarene Church on Olive Street, starting at 5, 5 to 8:30. And also, I attended the Springville Rodeo Parade on Saturday and I want to thank Jason Brassfield, Captain at the Fire Department up there and Chief Sutherland for getting our parade vehicle, our old antique fire truck over there for me so I could ride through and took kind of, like I told these guys, I said, I hope that, I hope your nice shirts and stuff don't get soiled in case they start throwing tomatoes or something at me. So, but we had a good time and people really appreciate seeing the county fire and the parade, especially the old truck that all the members of the Fire Department have pitched in and, and put this thing together and it was great to see the people that turned out to say what they thought about the truck, thought it was really neat. So that's kind of fun. So also was in Rich Grove last week to attend a Neighborhood Watch Preparation Meeting with some of the, Mr. Rudy Mendoza was there and Rudy got up and talked to the crowd and inspired them to take charge, take, take back their community and be the eyes and ears and we can't have people there all the time, so they have to step up and be part of that process. So appreciate you being there too, Rudy. But that's all I have and so now let's move on to Consent Calendar. Item 14 is being pulled for further review. Item 29 for clarification. And item 46 is completely off, so I would entertain a motion on that.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the balance of the consent calendar, less items 14, 29, and I-
46.
46, okay.
Second. Okay, motion made by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Okay, let's go to item 14.
Mr. Chair, thank you for letting me pull item number 14. Item number 14 is actually an appointment to the Pixley Public Utility District and I've gotten very involved in special districts throughout the county trying to help them so that they can improve the way that they serve the same constituents that I serve as a supervisor. And so the community of Pixley has a public utility board with a vacancy and they were not able to appoint as a board during their 60-day period of, or they have a 60-day window to appoint and they weren't able to appoint during that time. The board was split two to two. I went down last week and conducted a round of interviews and allowed each candidate, actually the, I didn't conduct the interviews, I was a part of the interviews. The Public Utility District conducted the interviews. Each candidate was asked the exact same question and we got to hear how they responded. The public comments were heard, it was an open public meeting and I feel very good about the process that was entered into. I'd like to commend both applicants that applied to fill the vacancy on the Utility District. Pamela Dodd and Ronnie Prime were both to be commended for their effort and risk-taking and willingness to step out and serve on this position. It is going to be for a short term, for a year and a half until the next general election. So that's why the decision that's being made here today to make an appointment is, I'm going with the person that I feel is the most qualified out of the two in the interviews that I heard, but it's only going to be for a short period and the community is going to have the opportunity to elect someone they would prefer, since the board wasn't able to do so. And at this time, in the best interest of the community and saving $8,000 to $10,000 to the taxpayers in a community with an unemployment rate of 22%, I would like to nominate for this position Ronnie Prime to fill the vacancy on the Public Utility District. So with the board's faith in my selection, I would appreciate your support on this item. I would move approval.
Second. Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Wordley. Cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Okay, item 29, pull for clarification.
Good morning, Board, CEO, County Council. I'm Peg Yates, Tulare County IT Director. This item is not a sole source and does not require bid waiver. This is an upgrade to an existing system, which is something we typically do. GE Software is already the software that's in place and this is simply an upgrade. We need to make a modification to the, to the resolution to make that very clear and we will do so. If you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm curious, so council, is that agreeable to council?
Yes.
As far as what we need to do?
Supervisor, there was some confusion between various county entities, perhaps because it was spring break week, I don't know, as to whether sole source and bid waiver requirements were required. We clarified they are not, so you would simply need to delete reference to the sole source and bid waiver for motion in your actions.
I would so move, Mr. Chairman. Okay, moved by Supervisor Wordley?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Ashida. Cast your votes. Votes are unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that finishes up and it's not quite 9:30, so do we have, we have some closed session we could go to for?
Yes, sir. We do. Your items are items A through B on your board's closed session.
Okay, we'll adjourn to closed session and be back at 9:30 for our timed item. Do we lose Supervisor Cox? Go to our first timed item, item number five, request from probation department to approve increasing installment fee, $55 for processing of payments made, installments to the probation department effective July 1st, 2011.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Board members. My name is Cheryl Passalakis and I am the probation account supervisor for the probation department. The California Penal Code 1203.1B authorizes the County Board of Supervisors to establish a fee not to exceed $75 for the processing of payments made in installments. The probation department has not increased this fee since 2002. We are here this morning to ask you to approve our recommendation to increase the fee, installment fee, from $35 to $55. This rate is based on time studies and hourly rates of employees involved in the collection of this fee. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just, this is a one-time fee, so they may make payments over a period of time, including up to years?
Yes.
But you charge the one-time fee for that service? And do you know how we compare with other neighboring counties in terms of this particular fee?
There are other that are about the $55, that's why we're asking to increase it.
Thank you.
Questions?
No, I have a comment though. How many years has it been since you raised-
Since 2002.
2002, nine years.
Yes.
Please review it more often.
Yes.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this matter may do so at this time? Seeing no one, close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll echo Supervisor Ashida's comments that we not wait eight, nine, 10 years to review these fees. If we were to do it on an annual basis or even every other two years, they might only increase by 5 to 10%. And it looks like we have about 1,000 folks taking advantage of this, which is a lot. And I would-
I agree with you 100%.
I would make the motion to approve.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Cox?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Wordley. Let's cast your votes. Votes unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to item number six, public hearing, request from Health and Human Services Agency to approve the adoption of adjustments for Tulare County Health and Human Services Agency fiscal year 2011 to 2012.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Juliette Webb on behalf of Tulare County Child Welfare Services, which is included in this agenda item. Speaking specifically to the fees in this agenda item for child welfare, there are three existing fees and four new fees that we are proposing. The first three have to do with LifeScan. We are required by the feds to do background checks on any foster's, foster home, prospective foster parents, relatives, and adoptive homes. We have been charging the fees that have been set by the feds for as long as I'm aware of. What we found when reviewing the request for bringing fees forward is that I could not find a board resolution where that had ever been taken before the board. So those three fees, we are not making any changes to. We currently charge $66 for adoptive, prospective adoptive families, $34 for foster homes, $19 for relative placements. Oh, I must make one correction, I'm sorry. There is a $34 allowed fee for foster home background checks, however, we have only been charging $15 when we pass $15 along and covering the rest of the cost ourselves. We do need our foster parents, we like to provide an incentive to get more foster parents, we make the fee minimal to our prospective adoptive parents. In addition to those three fees already established, we have four new fees we're requesting. New law went into effect January 1st, 2010, excuse me, 2011, where child welfare services, staff, supervisors, and management can be called for testimony into family court matters. That is a new, new legislation. We are proposing that we- So those three fees, we are not making any changes to. We currently charge $66 for adoptive, prospective adoptive families, $34 for foster homes, $19 for relative placements. Oh, I must make one correction, I'm sorry. There is a $34 allowed fee for foster home background checks. However, we have only been charging $15 when we pass $15 along and covering the rest of the cost ourselves. We do need our foster parents. We like to provide an incentive to get more foster parents. We make the fee minimal to our prospective adoptive parents. In addition to those three fees already established, we have four new fees we're requesting. New law went into effect January 1st, 2010, excuse me, 2011, where child welfare services, staff, supervisors, and management can be called for testimony into family court matters. That is a new legislation. We are proposing that we charge $41.50 per hour for social workers, $64.50 per hour for managers, and $49.50 per hour for supervisors. Those costs are based on actual salaries and benefits and admin overhead for those positions, so it would just be covering the cost per hour for those positions, for those folks called to testify in those matters, as well as copy fees. This is a new request for child welfare. We have quite a number of records requests that come forward from persons who were involved in the child welfare system in the past and would like copies of their records. Where we are allowed by law to release those, we would like to be able to charge a 15 cent per page plus postage. We did do research around, to counties around the state and found that that was a precedent. Set. Any questions on the fees for child welfare services?
Questions?
Just your last comment, it would be precedent-setting for us to charge for the postage?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. When we looked at other counties and what they were charging plus postage, that, this is what they've been charging.
Oh, okay. It's not a new precedent. This is what we're doing now.
I'm sorry, yes, correct. Correct.
Questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Oh, you got one more there. Okay.
Morning, Chairman, Board members. The last request has to do with the medical marijuana identification cards, and that is to implement a fee of $168. And I believe that that has never been approved in the past, so that would be a new fee.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I thought we had set the fee and had a hearing the next year and asked the question, how many medical cards are actually being picked up and paid for? And it was a very small amount and we upped the fee, so you got not formally approved. I know we've adjusted that fee two times through public hearings as I've sat here in this chair. Same question, how many folks are picking up medical marijuana cards?
Don't have that information in front of me.
Should have anticipated that, because I've asked it three years in a row.
Mr. Chairman, if I might follow up on that question, is that because we've, when we've had this permit before, is that through the RMA department or has it been through public health? I mean, I know we've approved a, we've approved a fee, as Mr. Cox indicated, so it's not a new fee for the county to charge, but maybe it's a new fee for Health and Human Services to charge. That's what I'm wondering.
If I may, to distinguish, this is the medical marijuana patient user fee or card. This has nothing to do with permits for dispensaries or collectives.
No, we have done ID cards in the past.
Yes, we have, and at one point in time, they actually were, you artificially raised them because of the state law and then lowered the cost. The last time that I asked Supervisor Cox how many cards had been issued, which was approximately six months ago, I was told it was less than 50. I don't know if there's been a big rush and recently, I'm seeing a shake, so I would assume it is not a large number. It is not required by law that a medical marijuana patient, by state law, that a medical marijuana patient has such a card. It merely provides law enforcement with prima facie evidence that they in fact have what's called a doctor's or a physician's recommendation that they use marijuana as a medicine.
So if they're pulled over and stopped and they have marijuana in their possession, if they have the card?
Correct. It's intended as an aid to both the patient and to law enforcement. And we are entitled and we may even be required to recover the cost of processing and issuing the card, which is a little plastic ID card.
I'm still confused about the fact that we did approve a fee and now we're, and then the presentation is that we've never approved a fee or there is no evidence of having set a fee, and I don't understand.
I know you've approved the fee several times before.
Well, that notwithstanding, I guess it will go forward today, but I know that it has been done in the past.
And Mr. Chair, also, folks that have the prescription usually carry a copy of the prescription with them as their proof. They don't have to have, as stated, the medical marijuana ID card. They carry their prescription from the doctor. Thank you.
I have two others that are involved with this process as well and they're with health as well. One of them is a new provision in law as 2012 state budget, and that's for the Medi-Cal copay, which will be implemented, and that's a $5 copay for all Medi-Cal individuals that are seeking medical services. And the other one is a pickup fee for pharmacy as well.
My only comment by Mr. Chairman is that this is a new authorization coming down from the federal government and actually I think it is a good cost-saving measure because when people have to put something into the system as opposed to having it totally free, it causes them to sort of think in terms of whether or not I really need this service or not, and I realize it's a nominal sum. It's not an ex nominal sum to people who are on low incomes, who are Medi-Cal eligible, but I do think it is one of those kind of cost containment measures which will hopefully benefit the overall program in so doing.
Any more further questions on it? Okay. Have one more?
This is for the CCS program, California Children's Services, and it's basically enrollment fees and assessment fees, and they are in reference to state and health and safety codes. And basically, what we're looking at is adopting an increase of those fees at this point in the game. And the last time they were approved was back in 2008.
I had a question, Chairman. When we say it's a sliding scale, I have no concept of what that means. It start at $1 and go to 1,000, or what does that scale look like?
Basically, that's set up on, the sliding fee scale is based on the ability, the individual's ability to pay, and it's set based on the, again, the ability for them to pay.
I understand it's a means tested testing, but what is, what are the ranges? I mean, so what would be the high end, what would be the low end? I have no concept.
Well, it says here, poverty guidelines and family size.
I understand, yeah, but I still don't, I want to know what we're talking about in terms of dollars and cents. Are we talking about a nickel on the low end? And, I mean, again, I'm just trying to find out, what does that mean?
I'd have to bring back that information to you.
One last question. The projected overall annual revenue for all items, it's not in our agenda item.
For the grand total?
Yeah. The, usually under the fiscal impact, there's a dollar amount, anticipated dollar amount. Do we know what that is?
I don't have that information either right now, Supervisor Cox.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Public hearing.
Open the public hearing, then we'll continue.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. Okay. This is a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Those wishing to address this item may do so at this time? Okay, seeing no one, bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to see this item continued until we can get a few more of the specifics outlined here. I don't know how long it would take, maybe a week to get, next week to get that, the information that was requested? Is it possible for a week period of time? Okay. So I'd motion that we continue this.
Okay, we have a motion to continue this item. Second by Supervisor Cox. Cast your votes.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, will there be a public hearing attached to this? No.
You can open and close the public.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, the vote is unanimous. It's continued till next board meeting. Okay, let's move to item number seven, request from Resource Management Agency to adopt the proposed planning and development fee adjustments as listed in 2011-2012 summary.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. Roger Hunt, Assistant RMA Director. And it's my understanding that we'll be requesting that the item be continued to next week for some further discussion on the specifications. And in addition to that, there are fees that were identified under transportation, under the Public Works Branch for transportation permits and encroachment permits that because of the noticing requirements and such, actually requires a much more, longer period of time. I think it's a noticing once a week for four weeks. We're going to need to not just continue that week, but come back to you at a later date to have you consider those fees. If you would like, I can go ahead and do the presentation.
I would rather wait until he comes back with the whole conference information. And I would actually ask that we continue this until you can bring them all back at one time, because I know you said it was going to take a few more weeks for certain noticing requirements.
It was an error to have the Public Works Branch fees included under planning and development. They should have been considered under transportation.
Okay.
And so, we'll need to break those two sets of fees out away from the planning and development fees.
Okay.
Planning and development fees, there's a 60-day implementate, effective date after the board adoption on those, whereas the transportation fees, there's not that waiting period.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, your board may open the public hearing in the event that someone is here to speak to this item.
Okay. Okay, let's open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this issue may do so at this time?
Morning, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Pat Sullivan. I'm an attorney in Visalia. I represent today the Porta Vista Public Utility District. However, I also represent five or six other districts which I know will fall in the same line as Porta Vista. I just don't think they got notice of it and didn't contact me. The question that we have is on the encroachment curb and gutter permit, which is $1,300. Porta Vista Public Utility District only has sewer, so when we have to turn off someone's sewer because they haven't paid their fees, then we have to go into the street and we hire a contractor who we use on a regular basis, and that contractor then has to actually disconnect the sewer line because we don't have water to turn off like other districts do. The cost of that would go from zero, which is what we're being charged right now, to $1,300. We have a blanket permit that we, that all of our districts file with the county, which includes our insurance, and we do that on a yearly basis, and at the moment, that is not costing this, the districts anything either. I don't know, I can't tell under this whether that would include anything, but we have a blanket permit. That permit, however, only has to do with maintenance. So if we hire a contractor to go out and clean a sewer line or something and they have to dig into the street, our permit covers that. But every time we do a disconnection, then our contractor goes to the county and actually fills out the forms and everything. If you look at the documentation that has been provided as far as why it's going to cost $1,300, the only cost to the county from, when our districts do it, is the cost of the clerical and the accounting itself. The other costs are all done by our contractors, the staking and the engineering and all of that kind of stuff. That's all done by our contractors. That's not done by the county. Now, the only other thing that the county does whenever we do this is they do send an inspector out to inspect the street, make sure that we've done it correctly and that the compaction and the new asphalt and all of that is correct. That's the only thing that we do. So for us to have to go from zero to now $1,300 for each time we do this, that would be an extremely high cost. We do about, Porta Vista does about 12 of these a year, which would then increase our budget by about $15,000. Now, naturally, we would have to amend our current fees for connections and disconnections. We would have to amend that to meet this, but that's an awful high price for someone that just didn't get their water bill paid, and, or in this case, their sewer bill. Most of our districts, their turn-on and turn-off fees are only 25 bucks. And the reason for that is, all they have to do is go out and turn off the water at the meter and lock it until they get their money. But in the case of Porta Vista, we do have to go into the street to do it. The other, the other cost which we think would be included in the $1,300 would be where we have a new connection to the line. In that, in that case, where we're going to hook into the lateral, where the contractor comes out and is going to hook into the lateral, we, again, we do, we being the district, does all of the cost of staking and everything, because I don't think the county would even know where our line is at. So we do all of the staking, we do all of that information. But again, that's going to be a different contractor, that's going to be just whoever the person hired, and it has to be, under our ordinance, that has to be a licensed California plumber in order to do that. So that contractor would be different than the ones where we're doing a disconnect and then connect. So my question would be, can we just have either a small permit fee cost when we do it, or could we waive it as has always been done in the past? It's always been waived for districts, and being public utility districts such as Porta Vista and community service districts such as Tipton and those. Certain question?
Question? Yes. Sullivan, do you happen to know what your charge is when someone comes and does that work for you, what it costs on a per access basis?
Yeah, if I might introduce Bonnie Knoll, she is the manager of the Porta Vista Public Utility District. She could answer that for you.
Our contractor charges us $75 right now to get the permit and go out there and mark what they call USA so that all the utilities know where we're digging. So they stake it, but the contractor does the work, and they charge us $75.
$75 to get the, access the information and then the actual construction work is done separately.
Right.
But it's all one cost. We only charge $75.
To the customer.
To the customer.
And now it'd be $800 plus $70.
That's what I'm trying to, actually, that covers your cost.
That covers the cost.
Fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other question? And perhaps we could work with Public Works on this, and I don't know when they're going to put it back on calendar, but I'm sure it's, I'm sure it wasn't intended for something like this, but that's where it falls and so.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much for being here and clarifying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to this issue? Seeing no one, I guess we'll leave the public hearing open and bring it back at a later date.
Thank you.
Certain, sir.
Okay.
Is two weeks enough time?
On one part of it. Well, in terms of the transportation, encroachment permits, that's something that's going to require noticing for a full month, four weeks, so it's going to have to be a longer period for that, whereas a week or two weeks is fine with the other portion, the planning and development fees.
Or do you want to bring it back as separate issues? Are we going to do it as one?
Fine.
Continue for two weeks? Okay.
I would move that we continue the items that we can here within a two-week period to the two weeks from today.
Okay, motion made by Supervisor Worley?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Ashida.
And I just think they should all be brought back in four weeks together, so that's my perspective.
Do we need to have a motion for the other part as well? No.
Okay, let's move on to item number eight of the hearing, request from Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, your voters to approve and adopt the proposed fee schedule for fiscal year 2011-2012.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, board members, CAO, and welcome back, County Council. Missed you. I'm Rita Woodard. I'm the Tulare County Auditor, Controller, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Registrar of Voters, and my residence most of the time is at the courthouse, room 1 of Wadi. We're here today to ask to approve fees for the election division, the auditor, controller division, and for the treasurer, tax collector division. Council has found that the segregation fee and the redemption fee on the treasurer tax division list requires an ordinance change, and I ask that you continue those two fees until May 3rd because they require a different type of action on your part to change an ordinance. And we've already submitted the agenda items for that on May the 3rd, so we ask that you do that.
Which ones are those, Rita?
That would be the segregation fee and the redemption pay plan fee.
That would be the segregation fee and the redemption pay plan fee that's on the Treasurer Tax Collector Division list. There, towards the bottom, the third and fourth ones from the bottom of that third list there, the Treasurer Tax Division, the segregation fee and redemption pay plan fee. One is $217 and, or asking to be $217, and the other are asking to be $133, but they require an ordinance change, not just a resolution, a public hearing. That's in the government code that, that that is, or I'm sorry, revenue taxation code that it requires an ordinance change. The other items are all pretty much going up. There are two going down on the Treasurer Tax Collector fees. The sale of the tax file to the mortgage companies is going down from $140 to $67, and the NSF fee for the Treasurer Tax Collector is going down from $69 to $62. All the others are going up to reflect our cost, and we've changed our methodology of calculating for, to do a better job of matching the actual expenditures with the person who's doing the work and to be more equitable in our fees as far as getting back what the actual cost is. It's been a while on some of these fees, 2001, since we've changed them on the Election Division, 2008 on some others, and probably never on some of them.
Rita, I, I did have a question, Chairman, if I might ask. The return check fee for, on, in one instance is $15.75, and then another instance it's $62.
That's because on the Tax Division one, we have to also change the tax roll. We're in the Election Division, it's a matter of just processing that NSF fee and say, hey, your check didn't, it bounced and give us the money, where the other one, it takes quite a bit more work to reverse the payment process.
Thank you. More questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak to this issue may do so at this time. Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to the board. Now, can we approve part of this today and not all of it, or do we have to bring the whole thing back?
You can approve part of the item and then leave the two fees that were identified continued until May 3rd, I think, when at the same time, I believe, the Auditor Controller, et cetera, will be asking to introduce first reading of the ordinances that are required.
Okay, so that would be the segregation fee, the redemption fee, and...
Those two volumes.
Yeah.
I, I have one other question, I guess. I know, you know, it's usually when we have fees, we have fee increases. When we go from no fee to, you know, zero to, to $53, and actually, $53 to $53 to $99, it raises a question in my mind, have we just overlooked this all this time? Oh, is there, I mean, what?
Which one are you looking at?
Well, there's, there's a few. There's the, the analyst staff services.
Well, that's because we changed our methodology and we're not charging by the type of person that is doing the work instead of an average fee.
So we've been charging a fee, it's just that we didn't, we didn't...
Correct.
Strictly allocate it to...
Now, now it'd be by whoever does the work instead of an average of all the types...
Kind of helpful to have that information because, you know, you look at this, you go from, you know, the, you know, zero to $53, it's like it's brand new, and so it's helpful to understand that context. Thank you.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve item, less the two items, Mr. Mayor, auditor, and then continue that to May 3rd for those two items.
Motion made by Supervisor Cox.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Shida. Cast your votes. Unanimous. Thank you very much. That closes out our portion of Board of Supervisors meeting. We still have need for closed session.
Chairman, items A through C on your board's closed session agenda, I do anticipate an announcement.
Okay, thank you very much. We will adjourn to closed session.
Announcement out of closed session today, Tuesday, April 26th, by Kathleen Bales-Lang, County Council, in the matter of item B on the board's closed session agenda, the board reappointed Kathleen Bales-Lang as the County Council for a new term to commence November 7th, 2011. This was done on... Hang on. Motion of Supervisor Worley, seconded by, oh, here it is, seconded by Supervisor Shida on a unanimous vote. There are no other announcements.